This is the October 2nd, 2024, Men's Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and we do not have any remote members of the board tonight. So if you could please stand and join me for this.
Let's be unified in this space of and certainly the following, or just stands, foundation of God, individual, purity, and justice.
Thank you. Right. So first up, we have six statements and item two. See if there's anyone in your room or anyone online. Please let me know if you see any hands up on the themes meeting. Do not see any. So let's move on to item three, which is the approval of some meeting minutes. And Jeremy, if you could.
Yes, sir. So there are two September fourths there. One should say executive session. That's in the packet. So we'll just be voting on September 4th. And I believe the September 18th, Katie, that didn't make it in either. So we recently, as of Monday, started our transition from local servers onto SharePoint. At large, every department on, and that migration has had uneven success across departments. So we're still trying to work through some of that and some of the, you know, some of select board agenda files are to be located. So we're working on that. That's what the minutes got caught up in that. It's a little bit more than there, but. So we're going to, number four A, September 18th is not there, and then three B, the A. One of them is executive session, which is not there.
I had an additional complex point where which is that needs to go past my tenure. So I need to stay from the bottom.
Right. So perhaps we could do those motions separately. Would that make it more straightforward? You've joined us in May of, I mean, so seven times.
A, I wasn't here before. D, D C P and Wester.
Okay.
You too.
And I would say we've received some comments from members. So these were integrated before Brendan Chanel was, was Chanel or something? Yeah. So we'll correct it as a script as an error. Pass them as a minute.
Yeah, I would be looking for, I guess, I think two motions, one for A through B.
And with meeting minutes is read, September 4th, 2024, June 7th, 2023, May 17th, 2023, so.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Thank you. That passes.
And we put meeting minutes of May 3rd, 2023, April 19th, 2023, the 5th, 2023, March 22nd, March 15th, 3th, February 15th, 2023, January 18th, 2023, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Excellent. So we got through four eyes and one state. Thank you. Okay. Great. So then, so I believe you said that there are for A, we do not yet have the September 18th meeting minutes to circulate. So we will acknowledge that and then we will have those hopefully before our next meeting so that we can approve them then.
If the board recalls, that was quite a long meeting. So rather than try to recreate that from the video.
Yes. Okay. Great. And then let's move on to acknowledgements and announcements. And I believe, so we have received some letters of thanks and acknowledgements to others who work for the town. So, but it was passed on to us so that we would know about these acknowledgements. And Jeremy, can you tell us about this?
Certainly. So these, they're four acknowledgements from the Board of Health to three employees and one neighboring community employee on two different projects. So Dan Byer from Parks and Isabella from Conservation for their work on the former Mendon landfill and issues related to getting access to test wells. John Dudley, Highway Surveyor on that project as well, but also in addressing drainage issues on highway or on Hartford Avenue East in conjunction with the Board of Health. And then Stan Golinsky from the Hope Dale Highway Department for the same issues in Hartford Avenue East assisting in a bilateral. So the Board of Health extended their thanks and copied the select board on it. Want to make sure that we made it to our agendas. Also say their thanks to these services.
Yes, definitely. We, we also are deeply grateful for the, for the work on, on this project and so many other projects. And thanks to the Board of Health for making this formal acknowledgement in this way. Any other comments?
The only other.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Brendan. I argue first.
The only other comment I have is that you apply on the color. It looks like really mediatic and huge rivers. Well, the world was completely over flooded and came back and it's weird. So great.
And then Mike.
I would suggest that we might want to draft letters that mimic what the Board of Health wrote and also acknowledge, send acknowledgements to these same people.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's a great idea. So any other comments?
Just have your CD and acknowledge your danger on this acknowledgements if you want.
Right.
To impart to you.
Right.
I don't think they were statutorily obligated to do this work, but didn't have the staff to go clear the space out.
And select bill and myself were copied on these letters of commendation, but this is the sort of thing that HR will get to personal files.
Excellent. So, I mean, so, I mean, Mike Morley, you suggested that we could also do similar letters. So that'd be, I mean.
Go ahead and make a motion. Make the motion that, that we, we ask the, the town administrator and the HR individual to, to draft letters for these, for these same folks that the Board of Health acknowledged in writing, put in their personal files and or send to their, in the case of the Hope Dale Highway Department, to the town administrator, okay, to acknowledge our.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you for the suggestion. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Given how they're saying, just in case. Great. So we, we will make our formal thanks and acknowledgements as well. So, great. Thank you. Right. So then next up, we have the senior and community center update. And I believe, so Jeremy, do you have anything to start us with or should we just anybody?
Hold on, let's go ahead here.
We can move right. We had a public conference session on Monday. We're still brief us on here in the event. All I need to fill in any blanks you'd like, but Phil's here.
No, that's probably right, I think.
So who is also from that committee?
That's correct, Dave.
So if you could, yeah, just introduce yourself.
Phil Sibley, Seven Nell from Cortland, Massachusetts. A member of the COA Council and Agent Council in this, in this committee. We had a briefing for the citizens on Monday. Been recorded and the documents have been loaded to the website, town website. So there's a design, there's a plan, there's a cost. And there's a frequently asked questions. I urge everybody to continue to look at those. It will be on channel eight. Once we get that, we'll publish and try to get that out as well. And there'll be video snippets that Tyler will provide us in case we want to put them on the town website. I'm sorry, Tyler's with AVMI, the local TV, cable TV, government TV access company.
Thank you.
And the price came in at 11,95, 11,9. It's below the 13,2 before. That's approximately 2,000 square feet less. So we shrunk the building by 10%. We did a detailed, detailed analysis of needs and space utilization. And we still can accommodate the needs of the community as well as the senior center. So the Mendon Center continues forward. And the only actions we have is to get it on the warrant hereby the, and I think the language is, if not, if, Jeremy, I'm not sure if Dave talked to you, but I think the language is just about similar to what we had before.
Yeah, the language is like the ballot measure, very prescriptive. We had language, it was reviewed by legal for the annual town meeting. We're going to use the same language. The motion would be different, but the language of the art.
There was a contingency, I remember in that article. So there might be, we may need a legal review because there was some kind of contingency replaced and I forgot why. So that may be.
Yes. At the senior center.
But that was, that was a different article.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think maybe it might've been contingent on the, the election vote. So because in May, we had the town, the annual town meeting before the annual town election. Whereas this time it will be the November 5th election, followed by the November 18th special town meeting.
We just want to measure care. What we did in the spring, care suggested, we actually used the contingent. So it is dependent on the vote, obviously, in the spring.
Of course.
Maybe we're the, or the, one of the other, maybe not the way we could vote that second time in.
Right. So we should follow up to.
Everyone means flexible.
Right. Yes.
Okay, so if.
Thank you.
If Jeremy or whoever, I'm not sure who could reach out to legal and.
Jeremy has been in.
And we move on. We continue on. And there was an update by the select board, I think. Lenny, you mentioned that we still pursuing those two earmarks, one earmark and the other grant, 850,000 from the federal group. And we were, we were down to the last five selections.
Pushed forward our project as one of his selected earmarks for community projects. So the, the project was vetted by, by him and by his office, and then he brought it forward to, I believe it's still possibly a committee. So there's, there's a process. So we won't know yet for a while, but it did make it through a number of first cuts. And so we'd asked for the full amount. Basically, I think that's typically what you do, but nobody gets the full amount. But the, the latest number, you know, was 850,000. So if we get that, that would be a pretty significant chunk.
Yeah. And the House Committee on Appropriations has marked up the appropriation bill. It has yet to be voted on by the committee and has yet to go to the full House floor. But the office has had great success and once we get to this stage, it makes it to the final. Likely won't know for certainly, last year's, as a guide, until about March or April.
But there's reason to be optimistic. Yes.
And then the other one at the state, the state for $100,000. I think that's out to, it's depending on the fact that we have a project, obviously. Without, without a project, we don't have any, these things are females.
And on the, Phil, I talked about the, the project. So we have a revised financial analysis or revised debt service analysis from our financial advisor that puts the annual, or the highest, not every year, but the highest taxpayer impact for a $500,000 assessed value at $135 per year. So that's compared to about just shy of $150 per year, which we were talking about in the first round. So this is about 90% of the par amount, the principal amount in your exclusion, and the taxpayer impact is ultimately about 90%. It's about $135.
I think the important thing also was the fact that what made the meeting Monday very good, and I look forward to it again at the end of the month, is that we had Jeremy expressing the town's financial position, how we're going to finance it. We had the select board there along with our committee. And that gave the town, that better, anyone viewing this will get a better picture of not only the community center, but also other projects that are important to the town. So it was a good session.
So I wonder if there would be an opportunity for Jeremy to do a presentation specifically on this in an upcoming select board meeting that we could just include that to have it be focused on that. Especially if you, if, you know, sometimes it's helpful to have some numbers up on a screen for people to pay attention, to follow along with. I think that would be very helpful if we could perhaps get that at our next select board meeting. And you mentioned also, Phil, that there is the upcoming information session at the end of the month. So I believe that that's as of Monday, the 28th.
Then Monday, the 28th will be an additional information session, so.
Thanks.
We're, we're always available for questions. And we may do some mini sessions at the current senior center. We're discussing that. And we're going to meet, be at the Lions, be at a lot of places as we did before. The last night just was, mentioned the Conservation Commission. A community president, thank you, Community Preservation. They, we gave them an update and the proposal, and they were all supportive of it. So. And they support the efforts. I think we have a lot of support. I would just hope the residents get behind it and give the town that centerpiece that it needs. That's all I have. Any questions?
Well, hopefully the questions will keep coming in. And are there frequently asked questions on the town website?
Yes, there are. The frequently asked questions, we'll probably update them on a periodic basis, every four days, maybe a week, depending on how many we have. There's a few that came in that we're going to work on. There's also, there's the did you know process that we're putting through the local Facebook accounts for the Mendon residents, Mendon moms and dads. So that we can publish just information. And they've been factual about what the center provides and what it can provide. So we're going to continue doing those things. And if anyone has ideas on how to communicate more broadly, we're always ready and welcome.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Phil or for Chief Kersey, who was also on that committee? Thank you so much for joining us and we'll look for more.
I will be here.
Thanks, Rob.
I'm sure.
So I wonder if we could, please, is there, take something out of order? We have item, is, I guess, related. So item eight is to review and consider appointments contingent on the ethics screening. So to the Mendon Senior Unity Center Committee. So a potential new appointee to that committee. So I think that would make sense. So calling you back.
I should have probably mentioned that. We're back.
Uh, the, the candidate.
Yes, I've been there. Okay.
Sorry for sending you off and bringing you down.
That's all right.
All right. So, yeah, can you tell us a little bit about, I guess, so Mike Burn, you, you expressed interest in joining the committee.
Yes, yes, I have. So I first joined as a volunteer. Then I became aware there was a committee position open. And I wanted to fill that seat. A resident of Mendon for 20 years, raised three boys, actively involved with scouts, youth sports and high school sports. I worked, volunteered as a a resident of Mendon for those groups. And now I want to turn my attention to help with the town. I think this is a great opportunity. I think it's a great project. And willing to put in the time and the effort.
Thanks. Yes. And we're always happy to have more people join. We, we have so many committees and just finding one out there. There are still other committee vacancies for multiple commit boards and committees posted on the website. So it is always wonderful when we get them filled in such a fast way. Does anyone have any questions?
I will add, you will note that there's not a term expiration on here. So this committee is project based. So it will continue on to the building phase part and should the both of us be successful. So this, this committee is not timed down by a term. They are committee members until the project is completed.
Let's make a motion.
All right.
I will move to appoint Mike Burn to the MSCC committee.
One second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Right.
About getting sworn in, one from the unit. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's go back to seven. So the confidence rate over update. And Jeremy, I think you have some words on, on this.
Yes, thank you. So last time I told you we were kind of working toward the solution. I think this time, meeting's actually tomorrow morning. So actually, I have a meeting with Time Bond and the Highway Surveyor tomorrow morning. So I'd like to, we talked about a couple of different options here. And my last brief conversation with Time Bond didn't really get much further. There's the aluminum culvert that has a stated life, but not a guarantee and not as long as the street. And then the concrete, which also has a stated life, but you're not going to get a guarantee either. So I've had this conversation a couple of times, I logically already. Even with the concrete, the guarantee that you're going to get is an installation guarantee from the contractor that is, you could get it up to five years. Time Bond writes that into theirs. Three years is typical. I have seen a handful of communities looking at RFPs like this that do a one-year guarantee on installation. So that's just around defects of installing. And the theory being if it is installed correctly, it has a very long history of having a long history. So we're going to talk a little bit more about the price differences and some refining of their numbers between aluminum and a three-sided concrete box. But I didn't know if this committee had anything you wanted me to bring to the meeting in terms of your preference. If you wanted to really focus on one and not the other. We'll, we'll go in any direction you want, but as the Highway Surveyor said here, he was leaning towards the, or suggested the three-sided concrete box. So that's my inclination is to go that way. It is slightly more expensive, but it's the one with kind of a vested history.
It's what happened in.
Ballpark, there's a large contingency built in there. So small differences then get kind of exacerbated through there. The, my plan is, as I've talked about later, I have to create certifications to use, is to suggest using some of that to start the engineering work and fund locally engineering work. And then once we have plans from an engineering sense, we can apply for some of these grants. Without the plans and without a local state in the game, it's tough to get in line for these things. And then the engineering grant, which would fund up to 50% of what our anticipated engineering costs are, is a reversible grant. So we can get that rolling. Once we have professionals on board who do this sort of thing for a living, they're, they're better at applying for grants than I am. Because every project they do has some sort of grant. That meeting's tomorrow and I'll have a, I'll shoot a memo off at the, in advance of our next meeting just because it's so long between.
I guess I don't want to rule out the aluminum option. I mean, because it's a cheaper option and I feel like, I still have questions. It might be that the concrete one is better, but yeah, I do wonder if there is, you know, history that could be dug into. I mean, if there are other areas, other, you know, parts of the world that have used these for longer, like, I don't know. Do they, they use them in Europe, for example? I don't know. So, but it is, it is a big price difference. And so it's where I feel like it's worth doing due diligence and ruling it out because it's not the best option. So.
And it does make sense, right? I just prefer the longest operating option.
But we don't. Right. But we don't know, we don't know which that is, right? So.
Well, I think the problem is, is that we don't know enough about the aluminum.
Right.
We know plenty about, I think that seems to be the major issue here is the aluminum hasn't been on the market long enough to out. By so, it's very hard to guess if you're going to get $500,000 more time on it. Right? I think what was the difference 10 years? And I think one of them, I think the aluminum was 10ish, 10 years less than the concrete. And so $500,000 for 10 years is not worth it, but $500,000 for 25 years.
Right. But I think, I mean, it's, it's still somewhat speculative. So I guess I, I just would like more information.
The stated time horizon for the useful life of the aluminum culvert is longer than aluminum culverts have been used. So no, nothing has made it to that, 75 years, 70 years, whatever. Nothing has made it to that threshold yet.
But it hasn't, not.
Right.
Look, I do think broader use and similar use, you know, means that aluminum being used in a similar type of function in a coalwork, who's kind of cares what the lifespan of aluminum structures are.
Does it matter that we use salt? Right? Does it matter how we treat the roads?
Yeah, man, this is all, all the standards we should be looking at for that. Also, the number of culverts we've been working on subsequent projects, we could understand.
Okay, so we're going to be culverts and this, the maintenance of those mean that we have to change how we maintain our systems, right? I don't like this, but if we maintain our culverts, means that our operations around that we need to change because we switch. I don't know people's answers, but.
My inclination is that they're similar, similar enough.
So we, we have questions. I mean. Right.
So.
But you're, you'll become experts and. All right. So I will, I will update the committee after the meeting. I'll take, I'll take all that to our engineer. Sorry, it's the day after the meeting.
Timing. Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you. So then nine is about the salt box forum.
Yeah.
And this, this Jeremy, is this you or is this Mike Morley? I know this is something that, Mike, you've been in discussions about for.
I had a meeting on today, so I wanted to open up, update the group. And Ms. Lowell's on as well, who I own update too, but that meeting was today. So I've yet to actually write that to you. So thank you for joining us, Jane. I met with Town Council and then Ann Mazar from CPA and CPC. And Dan Byer, who's been working on this as well. And the principal issue is that there is no deed for this portion. There's a larger deed. This was carved off of it by some series of mechanizations, but there's not a deed to it. And Town Council says she cannot gift and we cannot accept something that doesn't exist. And the way to get there, and I did ask the question specifically because there is a tax bill on it, right? It's like $25 a year or something. So there is a tax bill. The taxes are current. I had to attest to that to Town Council for her to write up some stuff before. And so I asked, how, how did we get in a situation with, without a deed? And he'd said, you know, there's lots of longstanding practices, assessing departments sometimes have different levels of analysis than, you know, a town council and accepting a, a piece of property. So the fact that it has a tax bill does not for her fully answer the question of a deed existing. So our plan right now is to have the land surveyed, which we'll use CPA funds to pay for. I told Ann, if that's not a possibility, I would commit general fund, funds to this. It's important for us to have this done and not have it be a burden on the, on the person who's donating the land. Construct a plan after that, which we can then file and have a deed specific to this property. This is something that Ann has a much deeper experience in than I do. She reached out to surveyors this afternoon. It's kind of a slowing part of their season, as she said. So she's hopeful it can be a few week turnaround to do this, but wouldn't commit to a deadline for me. So that's my update from this point.
I guess my, my issue is the way it was explained to me is that there is a deed that, that exists that lays at the start, but it laid out a whole bunch of, of pieces of land, the other pieces carved off of it.
Right.
And deed as it stands, the only thing that's still remaining is old salt box.
So.
That's it. So deed, deed does indeed lay out a piece of land. But all these other pieces have indeed been off of it. And this is what's remaining. But I find a couple of problematic things. This is a discussion that Jane and I had, what, probably six months ago, Jane, longer than that. And it was supposed to get taken care of. And we have six months and still hasn't been resolved. And there's reasons for that, but my concern is, okay, we're going to have it surveyed. Well, if there isn't a deed, then how do you create? And what authority does anybody have to create? That's why I say there has to be. The, the deed exists and that land is there. The question is, I don't understand why we can't just, why we can't just accept the deed the way that it exists where it's being taxed, because the only thing left is old salt box. the way that it exists where it's being taxed, because the only thing left is old salt box road. And if Jane and the other owners want to deed to us what's remaining, why can't we just accept it? So my follow up is, okay, they're going to survey it and then what?
Um, there's something called an A and R, which is approval not required. Um, and that separates off land that has been surveyed with a land, with a, with a plan filed into it. Um, it's not a concept I've ever done before. Acting under the advice of council.
Yeah, I'm very sure the rest of that story is, gets approval not required until it is. Meaning that if somebody else claims a piece of it. It's the whole thing, I, I just, I, I think we're jumping, we shouldn't have jumped there because there is a, there is a deed that exists from all of a hundred years.
So I've, um, for a little bit, I felt like I was, uh, go between a little bit between council and Anne, who was communicating with Jane and not doing a good job of relaying either of their concerns to each other. So we all had a meeting this morning, so I'd like to offer this board the same opportunity. If you'd like, you can have town council join next Wednesday. We'll have some sort of progress from now until then, um, that Anne's Mazar is spearheading. Um, but would it be helpful, there's certainly follow up questions that you're asking me that I, I don't have the answer to. Um, so is that helpful to board?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, I'm hearing the visit, I'm wondering if you're going to give it seem, see that.
That Mike's talking about, yeah, certainly, that's the larger, yes.
Karis, yes. But she is not agreeing with the interpretation of, I was told that Karis was going to get probate first. Do you know if that happened?
I, we have not talked probate whatsoever, that's kind of.
Well, her to probate person, another lawyer in the office that deals with these land trust situations all the time. You don't know if that's happened.
Jane, has her hand up?
Oh, Jane. Jane, we see your hand. Jane, did you have it twice?
You do, Jane. You can. So I think hearing it makes sense just to ask.
Oh, there's, Jane, oh, you're muted.
Can you unmute yourself, Jane?
You can't.
You can type in the chat.
Yeah, right, that would be good. Thanks, Mark.
That would make sense to, to, to Karis, the specific questions are actually being respected or not, or can't. So she, how she just have looked through those items and standing.
Yeah, because it's not going to spoil if she hears the question for the first time, which is.
Right, right, yes. Let's see if we can, uh.
Hi, Jane, how are you? Hi, Jane.
Well, great, I'm not.
I feel your pain, it happens to me on a regular basis.
And you're on speakerphone.
But you're on speakerphone now, so we can all hear you.
All right, I'm not sure you want.
I can tell you that I do, that's my.
We do want to hear you.
Exactly who owns this now? I didn't know that my brother-in-law died before my mother-in-law did. Um, I think it would be just easier if the town took a bite in. I don't know if they can do that, but I, I certainly wouldn't have any problem with it. And I don't know, um, if indeed my brother-in-law's wife, um, was included in it and my brother-in-law, um, my other brother-in-law, he will sign off, but I'm not sure about this. I mean, my, my sister-in-law is 92 years old. So if this is not done in a, um, fairly, well, in a.
It's going to be done quickly.
Yes, it should be done quickly. And if it, if it makes it easier, if the town just stays to provide, I don't know, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I still, I still believe the simplest thing would be to, to, to take the, the large deed and somehow get um, edited or, or have a new deed, just as there were all these other pieces that were carved off. And perhaps somehow we could get salt blocks, old salt blocks road carved off into its separate deed. And then whoever the owners are could sign off on it and gift it to the town. We can accept it just as the, what the plan was, so.
I'm 92 years old.
Right.
My brother-in-law is 88 and I'm 82. So, you know, who knows, um, how long we will last? And I don't want to be chasing a siblings of, well, not siblings, for children.
I understand, yeah.
So.
My, my children would sign off. I think there's one of them, uh, my sister-in-law is, that would not, so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, uh, we're going to continue to march.
Right, so I think, I think it would be helpful if a town council could meet with us on this.
They used to be a, right.
There was a, did you ever crawl through that tunnel?
Well, no, it was on, it, I don't know, the malls had the dairy farm and the crask was, his mother was a crask. And they used to have a tunnel under the road and then drive the cows under the, into the tunnel and then, you know.
Wow. It'll feel like we need a plaque for that.
All right. Yes, it's awesome.
Anyway, uh, whatever you do is fine with me, I, you know.
But we need to do it fast.
Yes, and the town needs it.
Yes.
You know, either.
So Mike, Mike Goddard, you had.
I just want to make sure we floor it on three fronts simultaneously, so.
Yes, right.
Anything, but by.
Right, oh, yes. Yes.
And can I just ask, uh, the, so there is a tax record, is it, it's this last record? The number 50 parcel ID 3-2-3-0-1-1-0, is that right?
Is that the one, I think that's the most, all of that, it's a lot.
Yeah, that sounds right, I don't have it up here.
All right, Jane, we're, we're going to get on and with the dead, I have a minutes from two weeks from tonight.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane. Thanks, Jane.
You're welcome.
All right, and we'll.
Okay.
He's putting that's what, what he's, it's great to have it surveyed, the bounds.
Right.
And then if we know that that's encompassed in that old deed.
Right.
Then we should be able to draw up a deed for that people and then just split that one.
Right.
Of the one owners and if that is the only thing left on the original deed. Why would you just accept that?
I, I do not know, but I, you, you have these, uh, we, we can collect these questions, I know Katie, you're taking minutes, so hopefully we'll, we'll be able to collect these questions there, um, that, that to Jeremy, so you can, uh, bring them to Karis and hopefully she can answer all of these questions before and during our meeting next time.
Uh, so Dan, Dan Byer did a lot of work on that line of thought, saying, here's the original, here's the product, here's the, here's the class. Um, and Karis has that work, um, and understands it and, uh, still said this was the route to go. Uh, so I'll get, again, I don't have the, um, depth of experience in, in deeds and land and stuff to be able to ask the follow up questions that it seems you all have, um, have more experience. So, yeah, I can justify that.
One thing I've heard Karis has been telling us is this, all, so if the solution is viable, it's a level pressure to build after they, uh, hopefully explains that to us.
Right.
So we don't have the pros and cons to each solution. If one of the cons is, it's illegal, well, I tell you. Right, right.
Right, yes.
We did have that discussion, yeah, but I'm not hearing that. Hearing is she has a preferred route of being tested, lower risk of being achieved, so we're accepting.
Right, we, we want, yes, it resolves quickly, as quickly as we can.
Yeah, the speed is, yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm taking from this discussion. Because right now we're somewhere, somewhere, we can slow down the resource.
So, uh, I think no motion on that. Um, so next up is, uh, item 10 is BBT discussion. Jeremy, did you want to say something about that?
Um, so, uh, Scott Saddish from the Hopedale Select Board reached out, um, to, to the select board, um, through Elena and myself and to FinCom through Chairman Michael Krager, um, to continue or kick off discussions on collaboration on, um, projects and improvements at BBT. Um, it's been charged by the select board chair and Hopedale to, you know, uh, work with the constituent communities, um, so we kind of have a, a baseline understanding together. So things he wants to talk about, um, enhancing the annual budget process, review admissions procedures, address equity in town population representation, modify the charter and advocate with state legislators. So he sent this, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, and Elena, Mike and I all been sent, sorry for the delay response to him. Um, so we've yet to set up, uh, a meeting with him. I was, I was initially under the impression that he was from BBT, so my framing was a little bit different and then as I, um, actually hung out. So we're going to set up something, um, we voted a BBT liaison, is that correct?
I believe Mike's wrong, right?
And that's, from a year of serving on the BBT school committee, I'm feeling certain that there, there is a program process which goes through the school committee. And that's actually where the charter lays out. And, I mean, certainly nothing stops collaborating, right? But there is, but there is a process that, that's already played out.
Right.
And it, and it happens and it runs through the, through the, 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 the life of members of the school committee. It's important to understand about BBT is that charter was changed. All that was on the committee, if you ever notice, when we do vote for for the members of the Galtic School Committee, all members of the 13 towns are on every ballot in the 13 towns. Because the way it works is everybody has, all the members have to be on all 13 towns because they've already sampled 13 towns. Make any sense? Rather than having just one.
Right.
Raise for, for the men in person. It has to be, I, I think it has something to do with unequal, um, distribution of, of, uh, attendees from each town. So we all, 13 towns have to vote for all representatives of all 13 communities. And then there's something in there about any kind of price, we change the charter. And it probably should, you can certainly talk about, there certainly should be back to Galtic School Committee.
And have you been able to attend, uh?
I, I, I put, I put a call in to the super 10.
Okay, great.
This, this is a call, they're continuing the process, this started last year.
Yes.
So I attended these sessions last year. The charter is the best new ad, but I think there was, there was a lot of discussion, seemed to be some, some agreement across different communities on some of those points that we laid out in terms of, it still needs to be looked at, especially the, the admissions, the selection process across different communities. Starts to have, you know, targets, so.
Was last, was last year's process constituent community represent, representatives? Or was it that plus BBT representatives?
Oh, BBT is, well, this is Hopedale proactively pulling together BBT. Yeah, and it's not the first time, actually, once before, it actually, I'm, I'm pretty sure originally a member of this, which both of them saw. Um, for Galtic was going forward, this would be a significant ask of all towns. And there was a, uh, collecting, and he collectively approached the towns. And what ultimately happened was Galtic went in a different direction, found a different way of funding because he couldn't get the majority of towns voting. So it's not impressive, you know, to kind of grade within.
So I'll have this meeting with Hopedale, um, I'll, Mike, I'll coordinate with you, should you, as your liaison, um, be involved in it, since it's their select board as well. Um, and then whatever larger collaborative effort comes out of that.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, next update is on, uh, select board policies and procedures, comments and discussion. Where are we there? So Brendan.
Yeah, yeah, sure, so we gave a very short, informal, like, didn't want to say. So last Friday, uh, we tried to, got through quite a few pages, did quite a lot of comments, made a suggested changes. Um, so I think we're having, we have another meeting with Friday, just keep giving that to the staff and hope that we can present something that is closer to the lack of Galtic versus the Galtic.
Great, all right. Yeah, thank you. All right, uh, then any other comments on the, okay. Um, and then next up is the, uh, special town meeting article discussion. So, uh, so Katie has, uh, shared a draft of that.
Yeah, so we had, we had talked about a number of these, but I don't think the draft was shared with anybody in advance of that, so I wanted to make sure that got out to you. Um, so it has the board of assessors, stuff that we had talked about, um, a couple of placeholders. Um, you know, it's called the Mullen Rule, we've talked about before, which is if you test that you, if you miss a public hearing, but you attest that you watched it, um, you can vote on that potential option.
So in this case, you need to have been on the committee at the time, right? And so, right, so that, yes. Uh, so if you are, are a committee member and you're talking about something that you, I mean, you missed a meeting while you were on that committee. Okay, yes, but, but men in need should accept this.
Um, I think conservation is your job, yep. Um, so, um, some, some that didn't get, uh, that aren't in on here, um, last annual town meeting, um, I need to familiarize myself with this a little bit more before my Tuesday meeting on it. But, uh, there was both the creation of a revolving fund for seller waste and then there was, um, an appropriation in the general fund and a, and a budgeting and acknowledgement of the receipts in the general fund for the program. Um, so that's caused a little bit of, uh, difficulty in how we do our tax recap. Um, uh, we can't just start using a revolving fund, but there's no funds that go there. So, um, I'm meeting with board of health and town clerk next week, um, to figure out the exact language and how we need to use the revolving fund, um, as it was intended, um, and get nice off the. Um, and what that allows too is, um, so right now, if there's any excess in the rate paying program, if we have cost savings in one way or the other, um, the, the money falls through to free cash rather than staying with the rate paying program. And an enterprise fund keeps those money as rate paying, pay or should, it's not everyone's rate payer. Um, that's the thing, it's not in here. Um, one that I don't think, uh, town council will have ready for, um, special town meeting, but likely will for annual town meeting. Tier report, we'll talk about it now, is in a number of communities, especially ones that are active in land and easement acquisitions. Um, you can have, rather than having all easements go to town meeting, town meeting can vote, I believe it's fiscal year based, but they can vote once to, um, allow select board to accept easements, which have no financial impact. Uh, and that would just allow a simple select board vote. But that needs a town meeting vote in advance of that, so we'll do that at an annual town meeting.
Then that was an annual vote that has to happen through the others.
Yeah, I believe she insinuated that and I didn't follow up on it because we're doing it for annual town meeting. I was like, we'll have more discussions on this, but a number of other communities, um, that she represents, using this.
You talk about Brendan would get a chance to. You talk about Brendan would get a chance to get to the thing. Do you want to get the first?
Uh, they did, yeah, they uh.
You put a list on there to distract.
So what do they?
Um, yeah, I remember.
Yeah. And then um, actually, I wanted to kind of talk about that.
So.
Is there any other planned ones for special town meeting coming out of the zoning by law review committee?
Uh, I don't know if you have a much.
Is there any need to accept by the town, accept the the law that the the government's supposed to pass about the new law requirements?
So that's basically what this is. So by default, I mean, yeah, I'm sure it's supposed to accept these, but what the bylaws come up. So a lot, something explicit and also certainly including a future of people.
And then I have, um, so I don't know if I missed it, but is there anything in here yet about possibly changing the day of the annual town meeting? I know the town clerk was interested in in discussing that. Did she follow up with you, Jeremy?
She uh, she did. She's she's interested in it.
So maybe could we put a placeholder for that once?
We do, so we get the answer to any we would have special to change for the end.
That would be a question.
No, that was a question. Um, oh, yeah, I'll get the answer on.
Well, it's in our, it's in our bylaws, so like.
It's a bylaw, so you can change a bylaw at any town meeting, but I'll get.
I feel like, I feel like there was something else related to the bylaws. Now, I can't remember. We don't yet have our general bylaw review committee up and running.
Coming soon.
Coming soon.
Uh, also, there will also be a number of free cash appropriations in here, I imagine. Um, so we'll talk about that a little bit later. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Alright, so uh, so I guess we, these when does this close? The seventeenth, right? So this is.
The day after your next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so uh, so hopefully, or I guess we can expect to possibly get a few more in, but uh, do send those along to Katie and Jeremy if you have other other articles you want to bring to us. Anything else for us? Okay, great. Alright, then um, the state election warrant. Seems like a thing we should do.
You think?
Here there is an election coming up. Hmm. Um, alright, so uh, I guess any, any comments about this, Jeremy?
Uh, yeah, it's a a routine function of the boards.
Yes.
And every, all the language on it is prescribed to us if you have no.
So I would be looking for motions.
So I had to move assignments, state election warranty placed Tuesday, the fifth day of November twenty twenty.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, passes. It's like we're having an election.
Right.
I'm inspired.
Then we will sign that, um, we will all sign that at the end of this meeting. You have copies of that. Okay, excellent. Alright, so before we all leave, we have to sign that. Great. And then, alright, next up is fourteen, right, for the discussion.
Yeah, certainly. So um, I didn't join the meeting, I should bring this up, but um, so I put together a memo that I sent out to you about um, the uh, but about um, ARPA. So the town received one point eight million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funding. Um, and has allocated to various projects one point six million dollars, leaving us with like two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, so what the table here is, um, our original budget. Um, and then how much we spent, how much is left over. All those, you know, some of them, like the senior center adapted reuse, vote dependent. Um, the breathing air system, just order a police cruiser, we should have in November. Um, I will send that memo. Of of all of the the funds here, the only one that has any sort of remediative action that we need, will need to take, and I didn't come up with the, you know, formula of the motions yet, so there's no motion here tonight for it, but the hot box replacement. So um, appropriated or allocated from that appropriation forty five thousand dollars for a hot box placement. And about seventeen thousand of it um, was paid for by an insurance check on the one that was damaged initially. So um, that means there's that much left over in the fund. Um, all the rest of the balances will be used for various things, additional kitting out radios and equipment and sensors and whatnot. Um, so we'll have um, a vote to to bring that seventeen thousand back on into unallocated. Um, I don't think we need to take that serial step of going into unallocated and then going to a new fund. So next meeting, we can have just a vote to move that into into a new fund to get it allocated. I have two motions suggested in here for um, allocations at this meeting, um, which are two contracts that I currently have in a part of the memo. Um, one for a compensation and classification studies from the Collin Center and one for a redesigned accessibility upgrades from Civic Plus. Um, I'm gonna start on the website, explain the website one a little bit more first, because I think the need for the first one's already understood. Our website um, is hosted kind of on a uh, an open source website host, um, rather than any proprietary owned thing, um, which means we're um, a little bit um, boxed in as to what we can do about it. The, it's not totally user friendly on either the administrative side or the resident, you know, person accessing it side. And and not just navigating it, but also the accessibility of it. We don't have, um, you know, as screen readers don't do well with what we have here. We don't have an ability to change the text size and the text spacing and the color sensitivity and things like that. There's a thing called Audio I that does that, um, that we could add to our current existing page and get um, up to stuff with accessibility, but then we don't get the whole redesign and the new interface. So the proposal from Civic Plus was uh, Jason brought forward to me not long after I started. I've had a couple of meetings in Civic Plus. We pared down some of the bells and whistles, so to speak. Um, the initial proposal, I think, was thirty six thousand dollars for implementation. We're at twenty nine thousand. This includes bringing the library under the banner of the town website. So right now, the library uses a WordPress site, I think, um, and pays their own um, hosting fee and everything over there, and it looks like a WordPress site. Uh, what this proposal does is brings it under the same branding and structure and everything. But um, it allows the library total control over their page and has, when you're on the library page, the idea is the color sort of invert, so you know you're kind of somewhere else. Um, and it has its own dedicated search, it has its own button, everything. So it's it's under our branding and under our hosting, uh, but it's its own, it's on site. Police will remain their own site, uh, um, which is something, I told Davey wasn't needed tonight, but suddenly he wanted to talk about the the, just under the rationale behind, you know, I'm sure, but um, it's been like that for a while. It's like that in many communities, uh, police is kind of separated out. They don't want to, um, something happens with ours, they don't want it to happen to theirs. Uh, so that that Civic Plus that's being procured through what's called TIPS. It's a uh, collective purchasing group. Um, we might have, we haven't used them before because I just joined, uh, but we might have used what's called like MHC and Messages Higher Education Collaborative, uh, which is also collective purchasing agreement. So these people go out in the same way that state contracts work through OSD's combines, where they go out and satisfy all our procurement obligations. Yeah, um, yeah, it's exactly like that. Uh, it's just one of the other options to do. Uh, compensation classification study, um, I had initially said, everybody understands the need, part of the um, analysis of um, for the next collective marketing session. Um, initially, you wanted to use a community compact best practices grant for this, and this year the grant ran out about a month before than it typically does, so ours didn't get through the queue in time. So that's why I suggested ARPA funds here. Um, in my request to the Collin Center for a scope and analysis, I had said, um, you know, understand that we are including public safety. A lot of these don't include public safety, or a lot of these do public safety as a separate entity because they're so bespoke, their contracts, uh, but we've included it here, um, and that we will be having union involvement in um, selections and the criteria selection for comparative communities, uh, because if we're gonna spend money on a study like this, we need universal buy-in, uh, or it's not kind of worth the paper it's written on. Um, so they understand all that. Uh, the procurement there is that they're, as you all know, they're a state entity, um, and uh, it's much quicker to procure them. It's one of their um, core advantages. I am sensitive to the fact that we just completed a Collin Center study and I'm suggesting engaging with the Collin Center again. This is a different side of the house from Collin Center. We're not gonna be using the person who did the work design, um, but I I I will endeavor to 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 make sure we're diversifying our sources and, you know, and consultants. Uh, for me, the speed of procurement here was um, was advantageous. If you look at the proposal, there's about a seven month lead time um, from engaging into, we get the final report, um, and that is heavily dependent on the information gathering stage, which is, um, you know, we we get surveys from people and uh, we endeavor to respond to them in a timely manner, but really we're at, we're at the whim of what other people are willing to help us out with. I think there is in the future, as we refresh these, because they do sit on a shelf and get shelf ghetto stale, um, there is the possibility to partner with one or more of those comparable communities and say, you know, if if men didn't opt in, not for age all have similar comparable communities, can we just do one big study together that has a large number of comparable communities? Uh, again, time is of the essence here for me, I think. Um, so that's, that's not part of this. Some surrounding communities did just do one, so they don't need to refresh, but that is on my, my mind, my core. Um, so if with those two, so the long way of saying with those two, and then with the reallocation of the seventeen thousand, there's a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars to be allocated um, after, after that. So I put some um, suggestions for the board to consider going forward. Uh, library parking revamp, so the library director can't take a very narrow project. And he said, but what we'd like to do is a, this larger larger projects. I'll send, get some votes on that. Highway leased vacuum, um, there was some miscommunication on what, between uh, the surveyor and the vendor, what they actually needed, so we had numbers kind of all over the map, but the fifty five thousand dollar number looks, looks right. Um, that's also through a state bid. Uh, and these are things just kind of pooled from from our capital plan and things that I think could get under contracts um, quickly, um, which is why I picked them. The kind of outlier heads, not capital, seventy five hundred dollar employee morale program. So um, we've went and partnered with um, a local apparel place um, to offer one piece of town branded apparel per employee, um, embroidered, um, polos, things like that.
If you can scan it into the one series, I think it's, we're looking to bring more people into the time, it makes sense to also put that. We do have twenty one thousand dollars, like, and just uh, just kind of react to this and
Yeah, I'd be interested in what the, what the catalog is, right?
Yes, so there's, um, yeah, so how many volunteers you can do?
It's good to go a lot of volunteers and multiple.
It's true, right, right. So yes, it's true. I feel like, yeah, there are some, some volunteers who are also employees.
Even that's pays to them, that's kind of.
No, I, it's a great idea.
Might not be a bad idea to to come up with town pin or something for all the volunteers and then let each, each committee that has volunteers.
Right.
You know, get something for their, like, whether it's the board health.
Right, and we, we.
Assessors.
Maybe we could do some inventory of how many volunteers we have, and it would be interesting to see how many committees people are on, how many years they've been on.
But I do.
Yeah, well, I guess, I was just thinking, I mean, it might be nice to acknowledge, I mean, we recently formally acknowledged some um, volunteers. But it would be nice if we could systematize that in some way and have, like, you know, you've, you've volunteered with the town for ten years and
Yeah, also.
Get something, I don't know.
Also, see, I was thinking rather than doing some kind of a holiday gap. We're already in town, hoping it'd be great to see this, we can have something in Galvards or or somewhere in town. You know, for all the volunteers, like we did.
Right, right, I think that was, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, but to do sooner rather than maybe, maybe, you know, the place do think, you know, right in front.
Right, I, I think, yeah, exploring some dates.
Or so after, after.
Right, so maybe we could look into some dates and venues.
So um, I'm definitely not into that planner, so seventy five hundred may be kind of wrong for that. I don't, I don't, is, I think our uh, apparel is in the roughly two thousand dollar range, depending what folks pick and how many people, you know, respond and um, and my probably high estimation of how many folks we have um, eligible for this. Um, so definitely don't vote a number here tonight. I'll, we'll look into a little bit about, you know, how much you've spent, space rental costs, all that kind of stuff. Uh, but I also like the idea of kind of an early December kind of thing. Because it takes the Christmas centric piece out of the two. It's a broader holiday piece.
Yeah, pockets are like. Being a hybrid of computers and portals, we also look across town, say, areas that just aren't paying, need to upgrade. It's just starting to be a process, a little process.
Yeah, technology refresh.
Yeah, I remember seeing just under positive. But let me get everybody saying.
Who's on the?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to hear Jason.
Yeah.
I mean, like, five years would be the side edge. Or PC, you wouldn't want to replace anything. Definitely.
I don't think, we're not going to, but we used to start with.
I think the only time they're going to say it's harder.
Right, yeah, squeaky wheel, yeah, there's no, I shouldn't say that. I'm unaware. Any, you know, or systematic approach. It's when your computer breaks, you can.
I think you can think about swag, please, also, I mean, yeah, Astro joins the town.
Yeah.
Process, yeah.
So uh, the other, the community where I got this idea from, um, it was so popular with folks. They're like, you know, I want, I want to help more, I want, I want to pay for them. So they kind of created an employee store, um, where there was some seed money from the town just to get the cyclicality of it, but they sold items to employees at cost and just had like.
We do the same thing at at my work, and they just saw, you know, they saw it at cost and people love it.
Yeah.
I'll just throw keychains and stuff, you can get away.
We did it at the sheriff's office and it was really comfortable.
So that are two.
Yeah, so um, if we can get the vote on the motions at the, the bottom of the memo.
Blue town, hey, twenty one thousand dollars.
Any further discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, passes, great.
And I moved to allocate twenty nine thousand, twenty three dollars and fifty cents, and I'm only allocated.
Seven.
Any further discussion?
Uh, a lot of people went through the review of this product, just so everybody can wear it, our top clerk, everybody's on board. Yeah, this is a real big good effort.
Right.
So if you want to see what our website will look like generally, not specifically, but um, if you look at uh, Town of Bellingham, they've gone through this refresh rate, so that's the the general.
Yeah, I think, I think it's great. I mean, I think especially the the accessibility um, improvements, I think they're probably overdue. So um, great, any, any other discussion on this? So I would say, thanks for those of you who are doing the work, uh, like doing the research on this. Thank you, Jason and Jeremy and others who helped. Uh, all in favor?
All aye.
All opposed? The motion passes? Great, great, so um, I guess when, when should we expect to be having our next discussion about?
Hopefully the next. Hopefully the next meeting. I didn't think the time, the timing was difficult for me. I have some time off next week, but timing is more important for the, for the end of year.
Okay.
These are the stats, the leased vacuum, I remember last year, like, they had some serious problems.
He, he told me that it even accurately rebuilt. It didn't perform what it was supposed to, and it's just they, they couldn't collect them last year. Couldn't collect leaves, and you liked it this year.
This is. And I know there's a question, if this one you and I, but we should.
Yeah.
I mean.
You can tell it's not, did he give you a number? It's in your, isn't it?
Fifty-five?
He said fifty, fifty-five. It was fifty when we talked about it last year, I think. I put the fifty-five in as a, it's more expensive now. So we can always come back and vote, we can definitely get a quote from a vendor and have this on the contract quickly, so if the board votes sixty right now and we get a quote for fifty-four, we can do the same thing and move it back.
You're saying up to sixty, you think that's hot?
I think sixty is certainly enough, yeah, because.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that, you know, we, we, the town spent up to sixty thousand dollars to replace the, I believe, from sleep back.
From our.
From, from our.
Right, any further discussion? Right, all in favor? I, all opposed?
So this is targeted for this capital budget.
Right, that's why I.
Right, that's why. Well, that was, I think, what we spent, it's supposed to be short money, thought we thought.
Stretching a lot.
But it was already the old, you know, we, we, we've never actually had a new one. It's always been, we, we have didn't, we simply just get rid of it. We've wrote this story, it's been cast.
Right, yeah, that, that will be good to get that completed, that can be in action. As soon as this fall. Which is coming soon. Okay, great. Yeah, so thanks for that, Mike. And so the rest of these, we are going to be getting more detailed proposals, and then we'll vote on it hopefully next time.
That's the point, that's so. Like, like my daughter had said, you know, I'll take a little bit wider at a lens of computer refresh, whether it's just library or not. But my anticipation is that we would go forward with what's in there. Those that I suggested, we reacted. But, and I'll review the budget for a employee morale sort of program. And then take suggestions on the other twenty-one thousand. We certainly have other capital needs and other, other things in the capital plan we can advance. We've got some vehicles, some administrative vehicles that need a kind of turnover. We've got, we've got a number of things, so. But I'll take suggestions from the board too.
One thing with Jason's, the, what we talked about, just one regard, urges to be, is some of that, you know, where full payment, and you start making into the same sort of process that Chi-Pers has, so more operational budget, so like, I think, I think Chi-Pers will, they're, they're really not. They're sort of buying out, paying, into life.
Yeah, they have a, they do have at least one, one of their new ones.
Yeah, Chi-Pers is, uh, slightly, he said, he said that, right, highway name is, has a kind of dumb tribe, I'm saying, pick-up tribe, you know, tries to see the.
Anything else on our, sorry, so then fifteen is other topics not reasonably anticipated, forty-eight hours before the meeting?
I have a few just FYIs that are in my TA report, but nothing that requires.
Okay. And then, but your TA report is coming up, actually, so sixteen business, I say, I wonder if we could just update about, you know, the, the Newton Committee, is that going to, the, the fields-related committee, is that going to be in your TA report?
The vacancies have been posted.
The vacancies have been posted, okay. Excellent. So do we know if we've had any fights?
Fights, I still have.
Okay.
Always.
Okay, great. So hopefully we'll be able to get that up and running soon, because I know, yeah, people are interested. I'm interested in seeing that happen as well. Okay. Any other old business that we want to bring up? Okay, so then let's move on to seventeen, on administrative.
So some of these are very quick, some of these will involve discussion from you all. So on labor negotiations, I talked last time that we had three signed MOAs and one group going into mediation. Of the three signed MOAs, we've then taken one and done what's called a fully integrated contract. So we take the old contract, the MOA says things one, two, and three changed, so we actually change them. You'd be surprised at how often those don't get integrated, and you end up with a contract in ten years of MOAs, and you have to read successively through to figure out what the contract is, so. Men has done a great job of keeping their contracts fresh, so it's, it's a simple process. So the fire contract's been integrated. I have a, some confirmation to do on the wages, to make sure the wage scale reflects what the contract says. And once that's ready, you all can sign. You're already signing the MOA, so there's no additional vote to happen. But then you can sign a contract. Town hall and police are happening right now, that same process, they're being integrated. And we had a successful mediation with highway this week and have a tentative agreement with the unit, which is going to their ratification. So once their group ratifies it, and we come to this board for ratification, the terms of which are, are public knowledge and will be presented here, but the only differences between what we've settled with other unions in here is some language changes, non-economic language changes. So within the parameters that the board has expressed. So I thank the, the highway union for their, for their efforts, both daily and in this process, and something that the surveyor has said consistently is that the day-to-day work of the highway department was completely unattached to any sort of labor discussion, and they came in, did their jobs every day, as if nothing else was going on. So they've been real professional through the whole time, so I think that.
I appreciate that as well.
I also know highway on snow and ice removal with Jason earlier this week, so, and then talked to the surveyor just now, kind of conducting a regional analysis on plow and contractor rates. So every municipality that has snow, it's a difficult time contracting and getting enough folks in. So we don't necessarily want to be paying the most, but we want to be competitive. So we're conducting a little bit of regional analysis there and looking at other sort of incentivized programs. One of the big things that we hear from contractors is that I go and I pay all this money for my insurance and, and the upkeep and the, or in the, you know, the needed equipment, and then it snows twice, I pay, you know, four hundred dollars for my thousand dollar. Awesome. So I'm more selectively anti-guaranteed minimums of funding, because if that's, you end up paying for work that's not performed. I don't think that really comports municipal finance law, so I'm taking kind of an attendance bonus approach. If, no matter how many times it comes, how many times it snows, if you come every time, we call you, you get to participate. Our employees will be able to participate in as well. The particulars of which are very much up for debate, but that's the conceptual thing that I'm trying to, to retain the contractors. And perhaps Draxler. I met with Verizon on, you know, our data plans and our cell phone plans, so we have a handful of dormant data plans that we've been paying for each month and haven't been using in many months or more, so cleaning that up. We'll take a portion of that savings to pay for what's called, it's called, but to install a, almost like redundancy for the internet here in town. We, at Town Hall, we've lost internet a handful of times, which is why the police station has two separate internet service providers to make sure that they don't. This would essentially be like a big hotspot, right, take five G mobile internet and make it like Town Hall internet, but used in a reserved capacity, so it would only click on when internet here goes out, so it would keep on. There have been multiple times I've left for the day on board from home because the internet has been so unreliable in Town Hall.
Should be, should be, since.
So we've, we've switched up them, Comcast came and put in a new modem that seemed to help anecdotally in the fourth room. We've filed lots of tickets and complaints and whatnot, so this is my first shot solution. If this works, then great, but I, yeah, we haven't looked at new internet services.
Verizon is. They, they put it that way last year. We could get it, but we never looked into switching over to Verizon, so Verizon had access.
That was the plan, I thought.
I meant eight days ago.
To put, to put Verizon finals here, and that was part of the school, one of the pieces of this.
Punch list, item number forty-seven.
Speak to, I mean, I mean, it wasn't there, there, but yeah.
Always.
But I feel like, like they were saying, one of the, and they're providing engineers, we're not using their Wi-Fi in H.
I mean, that's probably true world band, it's probably figuring our Wi-Fi access points for high activity, but that hardly is the problem if Jeremy goes home and comes back without doing anything, it just starts working again, that is not us.
So they have. Coming, still coming in from Eastwood.
And there's lots of ways to test that, and this, we can talk there. So maybe you can talk about something, we can do the test to make sure that it's, that it's us or them, there's some things. That we go back. Okay, we mentioned that you were failing all these times, not us.
How, how much you world band is supporting that?
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know language in our contract.
I have.
Yeah, I mean, I remember doing the contract, but I don't remember exactly what was said regarding them servicing our internet access. As in, a lot of places, the facilities business, did you know, what was saying, the facilities, what event? What industry, and then, and then after that, you know, IT is taking over, right, so there's a gap between IT's management, the system. Anyway. It's a big thing.
Yeah. Yeah, that was not the conversation that I had, but it is one of the many things we can both probably save money and improve performance at the same time.
I, yeah. Despite our.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and this is just you talk about this five G hotspot, they're able to get five G, five G from the phone, and then it's wireless internet, it's five G and stuff back up.
That, that's, that's essentially what it is. It's acting like a big hotspot that sits in the basement or wherever it worked, and then it pulls from the like cellular data network and provides wireless connection.
What happens, what happens is the cellular network can't there's no arriving together in town, I, I get less than far.
The speed, uh, the speed's really good here. And so if you, if you sit here and do a, like a speed test on your, your. Yeah.
All right, so it is contingent on five G service.
Yeah, so it doesn't work for everybody, but it works for town.
Okay.
And then, so how does the cost work? So there's, there's a monthly fee, but then it kicks in, is there some sort of like data, like, I mean.
I don't, I don't believe so, because.
Yeah, twelve hours, one until you leave it.
Well, that's, I guess that's what I'm wondering, yeah.
So, yeah, monthly normally, I think it's somewhere around like seventy-five or a hundred dollars a month, something like that. But the fact that we'd be using it as a backup, I think, and tell that we didn't use it all the time, I do not believe that.
It's a question.
But regardless of what I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense. Yeah, certainly. In that same vein, in terms of, you know, needing technology to get our jobs on, we migrated from local servers to SharePoint for all town departments, boards, and commissions. It had been, some departments were using it religiously. I wasn't, not what I defaulted to, and again, onboarding procedures. We know anything about SharePoint, so now we're all on SharePoint. There was a little confusion on what a file structure should look like, whether we wanted it totally replicated or a new kind of nesting structured system, so we've gone through that reconfiguration back to what we had. And it's, folks are reporting difficulties accessing files, either broad swaps or from a certain date onward or a certain date back. There is some syncing that needs to happen, so we were trying to give it a little bit of time. But I've been hearing frustration from a handful of departments. World Band's been really receptive to the tickets that I've sent in, and it's gotten my few issues resolved, and then I had some more issues, so. I'm, you know, give it a little bit of time to implement and things worked out, but right, right now we are fully on SharePoint, but not fully functional.
Is there any support for users who don't, or how do we use them? So for instance, SharePoint. Which is super helpful. There are people that, you know, open features there.
So we've done that mapping, you can use your File Explorer window or the browser-based one.
It's, it's, it's all on, on that.
Yeah, so that was, that was one of the one of the easy points, right, like, instead of clicking on T drive and then you have your file structure, you click on Men's and Town Hall, and you have the same file structure. Like, it's functionally and you're interfaced with it, if you want it to stay in your File Explorer window, it's exactly the same. So.
Accessible anywhere.
Right.
They, they put all the files in one site.
Think so.
User. It shouldn't be so nice to be spread out, yeah, because eventually we'll hit, there are limitations. It's two million files, but.
We, yeah, we can.
You can't load that too, you can't load that too. But there's limitations to what you can load that as well in the system, so. They're scaling out.
It's not reasonable, but we'll be able to, have fan around those limitations.
I don't think it's unreasonable, but I don't know if like information architecture is, they, they're thinking about long-term. Just like they probably weren't thinking about the storage architecture or system either, which is why during the migration, there were some issues, because there were some problems and aberrations that they weren't playing.
Yeah, like, we have some, I think it's like an access database that's not supported in SharePoint.
Right, exactly. And so I don't know if they're using a, a same tool, or if they're choosing a lot that's provided by Microsoft, but there are third-party tools that take care of this, of course. Know what they're using, or it seems like they might just be using their own set of tools to do this. Because these types of things like access database, things like that, we're going to report it out in advance. This is only because I've, I've worked with my officials, or not, this, this is part of. Yeah, the right thing for us to get into SharePoint, because it solves a lot of long-term problems that go beyond problems for now, which are like, link sharing and like links not breaking over time.
Yeah.
Changing permissions on iTunes, right, but I understand that, voice being, link goes away, that type of stuff. There's a lot of good things that come with SharePoint, but it, like, we don't have a guidance and a support, it does become very difficult. I know that they can take this in the past and not happen a lot for staff, so maybe you just want to impress how important it is for that to speed up when there's a problem like that. By the way, so they, they started, they're always responsible. Got them?
Yeah. We will communicate that one.
Sorry for your.
So I was at International City and County Management Association Annual Conference last week, for Sunday and Monday, Tuesday. I just wanted to kind of report back a little bit. It was, it was an amazing time. Practitioners from, if we say international, it was largely US-focused. But about four thousand practitioners who were in roles similar to mine, in places up to, you know, Washington County, Oregon, with a one-point-eight billion dollar budget, down to communities with twelve hundred people in a seven hundred dollar budget. So lots of workshops, stuff on housing policy, on communications, on stakeholder engagement, budget processes, on the use of AI on a municipal sense. We go to like these keynote speakers and they talk about, there's a lot of AI, and they talk about. And I talk about um, AI broadly and how amazing the tool it is. I sit there and think like, how in the world is this applied to town ended? Um, and then you go to some talks about procurement and about, um, you know, being able to use AI to, to scrape publicly available documents. In terms of what an RFP looks like and you tell it what you want. And so there's, um, I sent Jason during the talk about a um. Collaboration of municipal officials who are working together to kind of create learning tools around AI for municipal governments of all different sizes. Um, so I'm going to join that in some capacity, um, you join some subcommittee, get, so the town ended will be. Um, represented, um, and that brought, there's a few hundred communities starting in San Diego. Um, so that, that was probably the, one of the larger themes of the, of the conference. Um, but what was just in a kind of indescribable way, it was just really energizing to be around. Um, so many folks who have done this for so long and do it so well at such a high level and um, the kind of passion that they bring to their work. Um, it kind of reenergized me about, about this field broadly, um, which was really helpful. And then got to spend a lot of time with the Massachusetts folks. We had some, you know, networking events both during the day and afterwards. And that's like really where my resource network will be for solving towns' issues because so much is state specific, but um. Appreciative of the support, um, that I have to go to that. Um, so I want to report back about how useful of a, of a time it's. Um, and then before we get to one, uh, what I think will be the lengthy topic, uh, a very late topic. I'm a judge of an apple pie contest on Sunday. At the Daniel Farmstead Foundation. I believe, I believe Chad from Blackstone was also to be a judge, so eleven to two. Um, so I think, I think all of you have seen or talked or heard about, um, our free cash has been certified by the Department of Revenue. Um, at a level much, much higher than um, previous years. Um, so uh. I wrote some short notes on this, uh, but I, similar to the arc memo I wrote tonight, I'll write something to circulate that. Breaks this down a little bit more granularly. Um, there is one large part of the, what's called the free cash proof. That I don't understand and have a meeting with our accountants on Friday. So um. It's called the net change in adjustments. So um, if you have deficits in other funds, a, a grant or a vault and fund, whatever. Um, DOR says your free cash is reduced by, your certified free cash is reduced by that. This free cash may be needed to use to plug that hole later. So even if you have the money in the bank and free cash wise, um, it's not certified. Um, last year we had a four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar charge to that. So our free cash was reduced by four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And this year we had a credit, our free cash was increased by the net change by three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So in this category alone, there's a seven hundred thousand dollar change in what our free cash is. Um, I don't understand the granularity of that. It was submitted by our accounting team. I just have the summary proof that's provided. Um, so I'm digging into that Friday to say.
Seems like a large one.
Help me. It is, it is larger than some of our free cash from last year. Uh, local receipts are, yeah, local receipts, um, including property taxes, motor vehicle excise taxes, um, outpaced budget by nine hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly. Is the value of vehicles still in one?
So what are the, what are the, what are vehicle excise tax? We collected two hundred and fifty thousand dollars above what we budgeted. Um, I was here for budgeting process. I will say when I did. When I did fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three budgets, um, one of the main narratives was. It's impossible to buy a new car right now. Used cars are even expensive. Like there was, there was not, there was a plot. Um. So we were super conservative in my former communities about what we do with motor vehicle excise tax. Um, so I wouldn't be surprised if that was the case for the past couple of years here. And then now we're kind of unstuck from that market.
Well, and you know that there was one issue that the previous principal assessor talked about time issue, excise. That they actually, some of the excise couldn't be included, couldn't be flagged this one year because it was.
That's a really good point. I saw that twenty twenty-three motor vehicle excise tax was a lot higher than I would have expected it to be. So um, you're certainly right in that and it seems like money that should have been included last year to the tune of, I think it was, I don't have the breakdown for anybody. I think it was like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And you know, discussing all of you might remember, there were a bunch of the pilot programs. So, you know, and then you'll ask regarding solar farms, this was maybe the pain is what happened was. It changed hands multiple times. No one was paying the bill and then during the year. Yeah, they had, they had figured out who actually owned it and they had not sent the bill to the right person. Throughout this last year, they sent, suspecting some was because they actually got the bill to the right person. They actually paid back taxes and that maybe where another coin of fault came.
And there were a number of tax things that were redeemed. So the, that, the pilots is true. I don't have the number here because it wasn't in the top five that I moved, but um. Certainly. And then um, uh, similarly large one was that, um, there were nine hundred thousand dollars in department turnbacks. So unexpended budgets, um, general fund budgets, money that was appropriated to um, departments and was not spent. That has as many reasons as you can think of. Every department's a little bit different. Um. Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand of it, or. You know, police salaries. I know there was some unpaid folks, uh, some administrative folks there, highway salaries. Board of Health Services and Clough renovations. Um, all those in total were two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of turnbacks. So just a quarter in those, those four items. Um, and then the smaller pieces that, you know. The fractional savings. Um, and then there was two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in free cash from the prior year that wasn't um, incorporated. So that, that rolls over. That typically hadn't been the case in the three prior years. There was a combined five hundred and ten dollars.
We're pretty good studying for your cash.
One, one year was zero. So two hundred and forty-three thousand was not appropriated. Um, so lots of serious discussions. Um, to, on how, how to use this one-time revenue. Um, I will say I, I framed this in kind of two, two ways. One, you should think of it largely as one-time revenue. Um, there were lots of idiosyncratic things about our revenue. And some idiosyncratic things about our expenditures that should not be expected to continue year over year. But it's also, um, so that's, that's one thing at one time. Um, I like to think of this as two, two point four million dollars that. Well, it's not kind of extra or excess. It is investments that we didn't make. And it's whether that investment is in, you know, upgrades or additional services or in capital or in people or additional people, whatever it is. It's investments that we didn't make and the discussion around it is how do we want to make investments into town at this point? And then the secondary discussion, which of course we'll have is how do we right size going forward?
So part of the analysis I want to see is just break them to work and manage each side of the ledger we understand. Better right size and, and dispatch products that. You need to get is, you know, at one time, I was. Too conservative on revenues, go to resize, right side of the budget this season. So.
Better residents, right?
Better residents. Yeah. And on the expense side as well, we don't want to sure pull it all back and say we're going to reduce your budgets. But we also look at it, figure out, is that an anomaly percentage?
Yep.
Right? And, and then, and also saying, go back to, um, I hate being surprised. And I'm surprised because we have not had a, any sort of financial management. So I would like to suggest that you build, you know, we talked about it before, it can be better. We need something like.
So you're, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, just clarifying, very surprised.
I would like to say maybe end of Q two.
Right.
Financial package.
Yeah, that, that's. That's a really basic assumption that you guys should get. Yeah. I didn't get it in Q one, but you, um, it would be my anticipation that quarter. You all, you all have some, certainly.
Um, we used to have meetings with department heads, but I think that probably something you will do. So we're getting a bit of summation of that. Yes, we have an idea during the year as.
And um, yeah, exactly in that, there's some cyclicality to it when tax bills go out, right? That kind of thing that. A week or two here is going to make a big difference. Um, and the same with like, there's lots of line items in our budget that are going to be ninety-nine percent expended on August first. But that's, it's a year long service contract. That's fine, right? Um, so kind of. Massageing the data for those. Um, and yeah, I think the information should be distilled kind of through me to you. Because you don't need to know that we saved five hundred dollars on printer paper this year. Like that doesn't matter. Ended up. Save nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, so that's what we want to break down. Um, and then we had some, we did have some deductions, but not, not anything. Meaningful. Um.
So you said you're, you're going to write out a memo about that.
Well, I think, um, it will involve some, um, suggestions on my part, but you know, informed by discussions today. This whole part of this group had, um, like I said before, one part of it, um. Should be the property and street culvert, um, kind of investment, um, to get that kickstarted with. And then investment appropriations and stabilization. Um, once you have financial policies, we'll have a personal. Endeavor to have stabilization, whatever percentage of a general fund appropriation. So it'll be a percentage on a dollar because you want to have yourself continually contribute to stabilization.
Right now, our, our admin suggests that fifty percent of all free cash go to stabilization capex. Sure.
I would not suggest it.
And what about the capital?
Awesome. So I, I read, I read more to a little bit of this. So we have the, it's the, the capital expenditure stabilization. Special purpose fund. Um, and that was a special act in two thousand and four, like I talked about on Saturday. So we can put it up to, we can appropriate up to a hundred thousand dollars into that. We can spend the entirety of this capital if you want. We can create two million dollar capital fund for. Road service, resurancing, right? We can create, uh, we can appropriate, um, into the general fund to a capital line if you wanted to, to do. You know, smaller projects throughout the year that don't require an entire fund. The hundred thousand dollars doesn't limit how much the town can invest in capital if it's free cash. It limits how much can go into that particular fund chair. And then that fund has, it's somewhat of a tax, has some advantage of it, but um, then that's. I, I, I just want to.
It's easier over time as opposed to you do one time. You might be sitting there for a year. And we touched on, we had a kind of the risk to be taxed, bringing capital stuff within the last two years. It's just sitting.
Can anyone remind me what the, the balance is? And then we talked about it when we were looking at our numbers, when we did the uh, the T, the profile for the town administrator search.
Okay, our conversation on Saturday. The time is.
Um, so that's, that's what I'm.
And then I think, were you going to say anything about things that we like take, take home messages from Saturday to think?
Yeah.
You mentioned that you were going to do that.
Yeah, I want to get into a more formalized thing. So I wrote my, I wrote kind of a bullet point thing, but I don't get into a formalized memo. This is what I. It's not a takeaway. And so it's um. For, for posterity.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Are you looking back on that?
Uh, yeah, sure.
But.
Yeah, we want to. I went to a session at ICMA. It was like. Dealing with difficult employees and that. And, um, you know, I said one, one best practice and uh, is having that follow-up kind of conversation about, here's what we talked about. And then sending off an email that says like, thank you for your time discussing things X, Y and Z, like. So not that, not that you are employees, but not that you're employees. But what I mean is that, you know. It's a lot easier to reference back to this written thing than it is to your recollection of the conversation or to watch a form.
Right, yeah.
I appreciate your closing.
Great, so that's.
Great. And I know I mentioned this to you, but I appreciated the memo that you wrote on the funds. I thought that was very, very helpful, the way you laid that out. So.
Thanks.
My memos, please.
I did, I think I said in when I read all my, um, my preferred method of communication is a two-page memo.
Okay, yeah.
It has enough haste to it, but.
Right.
You can sit down and read it and not get lost again.
It, yeah, I just, it's, I find it useful to have things laid out in that way, like, so.
And there's a time for the. It, maybe a, maybe a pop, there's, there's a Mark Twain quote that says, sorry for the long letter. I didn't have time to write a short one. Sometimes it's.
You guys.
Great, so um, that was it?
Was it?
Okay. And then so on to eighteen future agenda topics. We, we talked through a few of them, right? We're gonna, our, salt box road, um, keep going with the um, special town meeting. Um, but any other topics? Have come up, so. So I guess with that, our next uh, regular scheduled meeting is uh, two weeks from today, October sixteenth. Um, Wednesday as usual.
You know, if we're going to revisit. Old salt box road, um, should revisit. The old town trash, trash property.
It's true. That should be, if, if we could get town council to really.
You should. I think I'm, I think that's also something to slow down, speed, right?
Mm-hmm. And that, that's a good point. It would be really helpful because that is, that's something that's come up a number of times. Um, so they're related to the. Right, we, we need to get some sort of resolution about that to know what the town can do and when.
Um, so what's about our next meeting? So I said I'll take some time off. So it's been on. Uh, a balance on how, you know, how much I want to try to keep doing myself all the time. Uh, I let go of that a little bit. And Katie did a lot of the work getting this agenda and agenda packet together. That's been a good job this week. Um, so I'll say thank Katie. Cause I did that this week because we're going to be relying on her more for, for next week. So like, I'm out the ninth through the fifteenth. Um, so I'll be in, you know, online and in. Um, but Katie's going to be putting together uh, uh, agenda items and the agenda packet. So I know most of you and most of the time are, are great about reading her in onto stuff, but um, really for the next agenda, make sure Katie sees everything today. And then she'll have the discussions too with, with Elena, um, on kind of refining, you know, remember we talked about this or reordering or something like that. So I make sure she's ready on.
But.
So.
Alright, so if there isn't anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor? Yes, so we all have to sign. Thank you. So meeting is adjourned. It is eighteen.
Can you stop recording?